We're live again, second month in a row. This is Harold Watson, Chairman of the Planning Commission. We are conducting this Planning Commission meeting live in Town Hall Chambers on Tuesday, July 20th, 2021. The core for this meeting is three, and I'll now call the following elected members to speak up as present. Joseph Garrix.
Present.
William Boyd.
Present.
Harold Watson, present. Dan Sift is absent, and John Staley is absent. We are having a one alternate standing by today.
Very good.
Okay? And that means we're one short, but we still have enough for a full corps.
Three years.
So we're okay with that. Today, we're also, well, we're not joined by Debbie, nor are we joined by Paul. But we are joined by Carrie, who is acting as our alternate. We also welcome Susmita Atata back from vacation, our town planner. She survived her children. And Aileen Marsh, who has been busy working live in person at many of these. Guests today include our proposed members of the new Greenway Committee, who currently are members of the Complete Streets. So we're going to get to that in a second. Public is free to listen, but may speak only at the invitation of the Chair during both administrative and petition sections. With that said, I called and ordered this monthly meeting of the Stratford Planning Commission at 6:32 PM. All in favor? Any objections? I need one more. Okay. Next thing we need to do is to, I don't have that printed.
This is the agenda.
I have it printed, I just don't know where I put it. The next thing we need to do is ask for a, someone to approve of the minutes of our last June 15th, 2021 meeting. Motion to approve the minutes. Anybody second that?
William Boyd seconds it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? We're voting.
Aye.
Yep, you're voting today. Aye. Aye. Four of us in favor. So that's complete. Okay. The next thing we're doing, if you look down your agenda, we have very little on it, so we should hopefully get out of here really quickly. Let's see, what is our next item?
Greenway Project.
Okay, the next thing we have is the Greenway Project. After our last meeting, I got several changes from a lot of you, I'll just say. Jen gave me changes, Joe gave me changes, William gave me changes, Karen Bird gave me changes, someone else gave me changes, I forget who it is. But in any case, all of those, in addition to the voted-on amendments, all got incorporated into this document. Thank you, Jen, for your grammarly advice and periods, because I was once an English teacher. So I'm happy to say that this should be in pretty good shape right now. There are a couple little changes, but there is nothing substantially different than what we had discussed in the earlier meeting. If you would like, I can read it and we can discuss it point by point, but I'm going to suggest that we simply vote on this and accept it as is. You guys will be, yes, ma'am?
I noticed one correction from the minutes of June 15th, 2021.
Yes.
Last month, at the Planning Commission meeting, we voted, the Commission voted that under membership and expectations, it will be a maximum of 10 members. But the updated bylaws indicate a minimum of 10 members.
So is that...
Well, it's the same, really. We could say maximum or minimum, but it's 10. No, it's actually not the same. Minimum, that means it could be more.
All right. Will someone give you a proposal to change that?
Well, it's already approved last month.
Oh, it's maximum?
Yeah, it's just a typo on the newer one.
Got you. Okay. Our recording secretary has that, and she has a Word document, so she will be able to make that change and submit this to our town clerk after our votes, assuming we get to a vote today. Anything else that anybody saw?
May I ask Harold a question?
Yes, sir.
So with all these changes, being that you are the most senior member on these, are these all satisfactory to you? You think this would be workable?
I still have a couple objections, but the wheel to look of the committee is that in that sense, I'm okay.
Okay.
Were you guys in the audience able to get a copy of this? Were you able to read through and see what's there? So I guess we're okay then.
Well...
Do we want to...
One last thing.
Go ahead.
I think I would encourage the Commission to read Article 4, Section 3 on qualifications.
Article 4.
Section 3, because we will have a completely new Planning Commission Board starting January, except for one member. So it says here that the member shall serve at least one year on the Greenway Committee and attend at least four meetings before being eligible for election to the Chair and Vice Chair. So I think, starting January, you may find it difficult to have a Vice Chair, even though you may have a Chair, I don't know, depending on who will be on the Greenway Committee.
Well, the way this is set up, if you look at the other document I gave you, it lists the terms for everybody involved.
Okay.
So we divided it up with anybody who was on one of the current committees, either the Greenway or Complete Streets. All of those people essentially are starting, beginning with a three-year term. And everybody that knew that we voted in this past week are doing a four-year term. So we do have a five and a five shift.
Okay.
So we have five people that will continue on beyond the whole thing. So I think we covered that, Susmita, if that's okay?
No, I mean, I just want to make sure we won't have a difficulty, you know, with election of Chair and Vice Chair later on, but like you said, if you mean not the combined Greenway/Complete Streets Committee, but just in the past, having attended four meetings and being on the committee once?
I meant both, both of the committees, okay? So anybody who is going forward from one of the previous committees, it already is assumed that they have their two years of experience. Does that make sense to everybody? Let me let Susmita finish reading through this.
No, I think, I'm a very fast reader.
Okay.
I finished everything.
I just want to make a final comment on this. This is a thorough upset of bylaws. It's much more than any subcommittee of any committee in town has. So we are actually the model for a lot of the other committees who need to get their act together. So there's things in here that maybe will be used once in 10, 20 years, but I think it's good for us to have them, because it gives everybody some idea of how we should So we need to vote on this, and then afterwards, I need to move forward the existing members Seeing that there are no more changes...
I have one question for you.
Oh, one more question.
Under Section 4, reappointment, on first page, you said, "Members who serve two terms must rotate off the Greenway Committee for at least one year." But I think several of you, including yourself, have already served two terms.
I am not including that. I'm including that going forward.
So you will have to specify in here that, you know, in one place, you say it's both existing and past, but in one place, you're considering only new members.
Where, what is the section?
Section 4 on reappointment, on first page.
Reappointment.
Yeah, the second line there?
Well, we could also just simply take that, "will be reappointed by the Greenway Committee Chair," instead of saying "may be."
Are you discussing Article 2, Section 4?
We're discussing Article 2, Section 4.
So a person can essentially serve four terms, basically in 17 years, they can...
No, they can serve, currently, right now, the way it's set up, they can serve a maximum of eight years.
And then come off of one...
They can serve two four-year terms.
Right, and then come off for a year.
And then must come off of for a year.
And then serve two more.
And then they can serve another two.
Four-year terms.
Four-year terms.
Okay. So they can serve...
The only reason I put that in there is, what was one of the problems with the Greenway, and I don't hold this against anybody, we're dedicated people who stayed on this Greenway since the 70s. So I don't want to get anybody not to commit to that kind of commitment. I just think that, as a committee, we need to have some sense of being able to refresh ourselves. So that's why I put the year in. Take a year's break, and then come back, and that would give time, hopefully, for some other people to cycle on.
And that's if they can come back on, because there may not be an opening.
That could be true.
Okay, got you.
But I think that it makes for a healthier committee. Anything else? We have to address how we are going to cover. A member who serves one four-year term may be reappointed by the Greenway Committee Chair to a second term of four years. Is that what you had a problem with?
No, I was just clarifying the second line.
Members who serve two terms must rotate off the Greenway Committee for at least one year.
So I didn't look at that one four-year term. I thought when you said two terms, I meant two election terms.
No, I basically don't know four-year.
Okay.
I mean, honestly, for most of us here, maybe one exception. We're getting older, we're not, this really will apply to someone who's in their 20s, who comes on, who has a whole lot of other things happening, more than it will to retirees. It would be nice saying it that way. We don't have to leave this in here, I'm perfectly willing to cut it if you want.
So I'm just bringing out some questions. It's for the Commission to decide what they want to do.
Susmita, I don't understand what your concern is. I didn't hear what you said. If people could use the microphone instead of speaking...
Sorry. So under Article 2, Section 4, the way I read it, first of all, I just did not see that he meant one term as four years. I thought, you know, in the past, it was every two years. So when I read that, "Members who serve two terms must rotate off," I know that Harold was already long enough on the Greenway Committee, and I didn't want him to exclude himself by saying he would have to take one year break. So I just brought that point to his attention.
That will hit me at some point, I'm aware of that. So is it clear now, is accepted?
Yes, it's clear now.
Anything else, anybody? Because I really would like to close this and move on. Motion to accept the bylaws as printed? With the two changes that Aileen has? Yes. Do we have a second?
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Oh, aye. Okay. Four to one, four to zero. unanimous? Okay, great. Thank you, guys. Okay, let's go to the next. First, there actually wasn't a second change, we decided to leave it. You're right, there was one change, I'm sorry. Okay, the next thing we need to do, I have copies of this, I don't know if everybody has.
I think it's in the [inaudible].
It didn't change, it was exactly the same. Okay, guys, I worked really hard to try to combine two committees and also add in new people, because, I don't know if everybody's aware, but our Greenway Committee was having trouble getting a quorum, because we had so few members who could be here. That's not the case with our Complete Streets, but it's taken me several years, and I know there are people in the Complete Streets group that will agree with me on this, that it's taken several years to get people to understand that there really is no difference, short of the architectural features, between our plans for the Complete Streets and our plans for the Greenway. It's really the funding stream that differs. So putting these two committees together makes great sense. I had worked it out earlier, so that we could have exactly the same half of each committee going together, and we could have new members coming on, all of that happening with 13 people. But my glorious better halves here decided they wanted it to be 10, and we're sticking with 10. So it's made it a little bit harder, and honestly, this is something that I've spoken with our mayor about. She's happy to see this be non-political. What she really feels, and I agree with her, that this is something important for Stratford, it has nothing to do with politics. I went as far as to try to balance even political parties with Ds, U's, and Rs. I managed to come up with a really good combo. That kind of has gotten a little brushed up here, but we still almost have it. We still have, I think, four Republicans, two independents, and three Democrats, or something of that sort. So we have a good mix of everybody in here. I'm going to go through this list. There is going to be another change coming up, I promise, and that is in a direct response to Karen, who really wants to continue on. What we're going to do for right now is, anybody who is not on this committee, we are going to have an open, open, open attitude, that anybody can come and join us, and we will have responses from anybody who gathers and brings their points in an interesting way. So I don't want to exclude anybody from contributing to this committee. But if you look at the list that has the Stratford, Housatonic, Greenway Members and Terms Contract, 62321, the first 10 members are the existing committee. I'm going to go down the list, and I'm going to first tell you who was on the Complete Streets. Tom Dillon, George, Jennifer, and myself. We were all Complete Streets members. Now, the opposite side is the only person that we're carrying over from the Greenway Committee is myself, also because I was on both committees. We're carrying James Simon over from the original Greenway Committee, and we're carrying Michael Masyska over from the original Greenway Committee. And everybody else on that list, Karen Bird, Ellen Frank, Nels Pearson, and I guess that's it. Those people are all of our new members. The new members were chosen very specifically, because they have shown that they are active bike riders. What we needed on this committee was more people who actually used the facilities, so that we could get real comments about what was working, what wasn't, and there wouldn't be as many unanswered questions about safety. That these riders who use Stratford Streets to ride can give us the best information that the state can, DOT can, they're the ones that are on the ground. So I think it's critical. So in any case, there's one person who, Ellen Frank, who I have not heard from, and Karen arrived tonight to ask me if she could be on this. The other person that was already voted in was Stacy Taveras. I will, so essentially, right now, I have one position, and I have Ellen Frank, Karen Rodea, and Stacy Taveras, three women. I wanted to make sure that we got a woman onto our committee. I also wanted to make sure we got a minority onto our committee, so you can see my difficulty here, because currently, if I don't take Stacy, we don't have a minority on our committee. So I think a decision needs to come down between Karen and Stacy, as to who we're going to give this one seat left over to. The other person is that Ellen, who has not responded to any of my emails to her, I'm not sure, she might just be in a situation right now, or she might be on vacation, but time moves on, is the way I look at it. So I would like to, first, we need to vote in the three, the three Complete Streets people onto the new committee. Then we need to make a decision about how are we going to handle this one final seat. Now, if we want to delay that one, that's okay, we can start our meeting in five minutes. And at the next meeting, we can maybe have worked it out amongst us, and I'll come to you with a suggestion. Oh, because I didn't vote in on, okay. I am a [inaudible]. Well, no, we need to vote in. So we are going to, tonight, we are going to be voting on, we're going to vote George in, we're going to vote Jennifer in, we're going to vote James Simon, although he's not here, and we're going to vote Dave, and we're going to vote Tom. And that will give us nine people, and then we're going to, I'm going to hold off on the decision for the last person until our next meeting, so I can beat with the two of them and see what accommodation we can come up with. Does that make sense? Before we do that, I gave as a courtesy to our new people to actually come up and speak a little bit in the support of good communications between the Greenway Committee and Planning, which is, believe it or not, your boss. This is a subcommittee of Planning, and that had been forgotten. So in that sense, I would love for you each to come up and just think, does that belong? One or two minutes? Why are you on the Greenway Committee? What are you passionate about in terms of the Greenway?
You're going to call their names one by one?
I, or you could just say who goes first. Ladies first, Jen. You can come up, come up, we'll put you on the spot.
I'm Jen Sheldon, and I've lived in Stratford forever, and I enjoy the Greenway, we walk it, and I think it can be better. So I'm just looking forward to working with the team to improve that and make this a better town for all of us to enjoy.
And you live in the 5th District?
Yes, yes, I do.
First member of the Greenway from the 1st and 5th District.
Well, thank you.
Very nice.
Honored.
Great. Tom?
I'm Tom Dillon, I'm a resident of the Historic District, and, you know, just been really excited about the project since its inception, in that, you know, I really believe Stratford uniquely has the ability to implement a pedestrian lifestyle, more than most other towns in Fairfield County. It's a big thing for our future, to get that to a walking train station lifestyle, but also street safety from everybody, from kids to the handicap. There's a lot of handicap people in Stratford, and they are out there navigating unsafe roads for no reason. So we can do something about that, and I'd love to be a part of it, and willing to throw my back into it, and looking forward to it.
You are also a rider, correct?
Yeah, I would say I am a light rider at this point. I have not been getting out as regular as I should, but I've done the whole lower loop dozens of times, and appreciate that aspect of it. But I'm embarrassed to say that I'm way behind on my biking this season, so...
I hear you, everybody is. I also want everybody to know that Tom is active in some of the stuff that's going on, like Shakespeare, can you hear me? The Shakespeare Market, and also the market at Paradise. So those are connecting points for our future Greenway. He has a good, a lot of input to make in terms of that, in terms of what we do in the future. Yes?
I did have a question for Tom, and maybe some of the other new members. Part of the Greenway, that you're saying, biking, do you find Stratford has enough sidewalks to execute some of the walking or and/or biking? Because you're walking, there's a lot of places, like on Elm Street, where you're walking, at some point, the sidewalk ends.
Yeah.
Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, I think there's not a great consistency, you know, on the sidewalks, but it kind of works both ways. So when you're traveling down Main Street, you know, from the Historic District down to Short Beach, you know, the secret is, you use the sidewalk on the northbound lane. It's the safest thing to do, there's no pedestrian traffic, and people do that frequently. So it's that locals doing things that are not the right thing to do, that actually, you know, that are common. So I think that the consistency of having the expectation that you can get from point A to point B safely on curbed sidewalks. The other major issue is that, as simple as it is, some of the curbs between streets are at 90 degrees, and that makes it impossible for the wheelchairs, difficult for the walkers, and, you know, tricky but dangerous for the bikes. So it's simple things like that.
Okay. And just so you know, a multimodal transportation needs all types of travel.
Yeah.
What we have planned on the Complete Streets for Main Street has both a sidewalk and a bike lane. So sometimes they're combined into one 10-foot, one 14-foot lane, as we have down by the sewer, but all of those combinations are possible.
Yeah, I mean, I've just said Paradise Green Market, the farmer's market on Mondays, 2 to 6, come down. You know, I specifically was approached by someone who's using, you know, one of the carts, and he lives on East Main, and he's got to get to the dock for shopping. And so, you know, in the real world, that's short and easy, but in our world, he's got to get under the train track, people are hustling and bustling at that section, and there's not a safe contiguous sidewalk to get a citizen from East Main right to the dock. So there's lots of low-hanging fruit out there, but it is time-consuming and expensive and challenging, too.
Nice.
Thank you.
George?
Good evening, all. My name is George Perham, and I'm a 68-year resident of Stratford, Connecticut. Stratford High School is my alma mater, I was also gifted to be the architect for the new high school. Well, thank you, thank you. And I've also been appointed by the previous mayor to be, to head up the Regional Redevelopment Agency for the town of Stratford. Under that committee, we've had the Complete Streets, and we've had the Shakespeare, and we've had many other subcommittees that were part of our committee. We just completed with Susmita yesterday, the interviews for the new Center School project, development project. So I've got a lot of passion and a lot of love for the town, I've been born and raised in, raised my kids here. They went to Pinellas, so we're fighting at the football teams, the games, I mean. Well, I was a big part, because of an architect and a site planner, a big part of the Complete Streets, along with Mr. Watson and Mr. Dillon, and that, it was a sort of a humbling committee to beyond. It was nice to know how many people care about this town, as the same reason all you folks are on the committee. So I look forward to continuing my presence on the committees for as long as I can, hopefully two, four-year terms. And I thank you for having me.
Thank you. Our Complete Streets community engagement was, I think, one of the best community engagements that I've seen in this town in 15 years that I've been here. We really did a bang-up job getting people in a positive way to contribute to that, and a lot of that had to do with George, so thank you. Karen, you want to say something to us?
Karen Rodea, do you need my address, too?
No.
Okay. I've been on Greenway since...
Pull the mic closer to you.
I've been on Greenway since it started, the original committee, and...
Tell me the year.
My passion behind being part of it is the connectivity of family... My passion behind being part of it is the connectivity of families and the public safety component combined, and then you add in all the wonderful things that we have in town to offer, and connecting those dots. After being, going to Greenway is another, not just other communities in Connecticut, but in Europe, and in, you know, I mean, I went to one in Amsterdam that was absolutely mind-blowing, and then there's several in New Jersey that are absolutely phenomenal. And I brought all that information to the committee so that we could use components of that that fit our, our community. But the biggest thing that I wanna see out of the Greenway is the families being able to utilize them in a safe and fun way, and it'll bring in people from other communities to use it and enjoy all the wonderful things we have to offer, and whether it's the waterfront or the forest, or the breweries, or the riverfront, there's so many wonderful places that we can connect to. But the real goal is, is to do it safely, and to accommodate different types of, you have the walking, you have the runners, you have the bicycles, but there's other new things that are coming up that we're seeing, which are those motorized scooters? And what is it called, the Segway? I've seen people with Segways in town, and we need to make it safe and to teach everybody how to be safe, starting with the kids, you know, if you start with them young and teach them all the safety components, hopefully they'll utilize them and teach their parents.
Karen, can you, I'm always trying to, to get this information to everybody so they understand it. I don't know the exact date, all I know is there's a tablet down at Booth, at Short Beach, that says nineteen seventy-nine as our first Greenway.
That was an original Greenway Committee, and I don't know whether, I think that might have been sponsored by the town council.
That, but I do believe that Joe Feschi was on that original committee.
Yeah, I believe he was as well, and it was just a walking area from AFC.
Down to the beach and back.
And they wanted to expand it, and so when we did the Hunter Haven connection, that expanded it, and then as we looked at different pieces, you know, you have to do it when the grants are available.
The grants are there.
And things like that, and so, and that moves very slowly. And speaking to one of your pieces in your, in your bylaws about the term, term limits, because that's technically what it is, you may wanna be cautious about that, because you're gonna need people that have the history, that understand and are able to pass that on, because the wheels of the financial component move very slowly. Like, we have in town now, there's a, I believe it's an ordinance, that when they redo a street, they're supposed to put a strike for bicycle lanes.
That's our Complete Streets policy.
But it's, is it being done?
Well, that's the question that we need to ask, and that's gonna be the, one of the first questions that the new committee's gonna have to bring up.
You know, and, and those are the things.
We now have a Green, a Green, a Complete Streets policy that was put through and voted on by town council, but they took out a lot of the reported requirements out of it. So I think that's something the Greenway can ask, should we put some of those back in and start getting more data on what's happening, what we are doing as a town?
Yeah, I mean, I think that.
Oh, Karen?
But having, having the continuity is helpful.
I, I understand.
And thank you for giving me the opportunity, I appreciate it.
We'll be in touch, I promise you.
That was Karen.
You what?
Oh.
So what I'd like to do is, will someone, I would like someone to offer a motion for Tom Dillon, George Purham, Jennifer Sheldon, James Simon, and Harold Watson to the new Greenway Committee. No, he's already on there.
Okay. Well, I'll make a motion to accept all of these fine people to the new committee. I mean, they're very passionate, and I, I mean, you couldn't ask for better.
Second that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so that's unanimous, four to zero. Then I think we have it. The only other thing that we are, we still have one position opening. I could ask for the indulgence of the committee to say, would they allow me to work between the two people and come to a resolution, and bring that to the Greenway Committee, that final seat? I just don't want them to be, to be going on in November, I'm trying to get this to move forward.
I agree, let's give it a deadline to, I guess, get in touch with Karen, maybe by mail or something.
Oh, I could, we could do this on the phone, I, 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 I can say, in the next week, I could get this done.
September fifteenth as a final.
Okay, I, the only, the situation that we have is, we are scheduled right now on the calendar to have, I believe it's August the fourth is our scheduled.
Greenway committee.
Greenway Committee meeting. I'm trying to get this so that all these people are on, so the Greenway Committee can meet.
So before we adjourn today, I have a few things, some minor changes that I have noticed in this, nothing major, Mr. Watson.
You can go with them.
So the bylaws of the Stratford-Housatonic Greenway Committee is the title, it should be titled as Complete Streets and Greenway Committee. And the second change, because it's a combined committee now.
It's a combined committee, and what, the Stratford-Housatonic Greenway is the regional planning description of what our Greenway is.
Yes, but Complete Streets are a little different than Greenway, and when you're combining both committees, you did say here and after refer to as the Greenway Committee, which is good.
Right.
But the title should say Greenway and Complete Streets Committee.
What we are doing is combining both of them, that does not combine them.
It's up to you, I'm just bringing out the questions.
Anything on, anything on this, Complete Streets is part of that.
Well, you have to specify somewhere that it is part of that, I don't.
I do, yeah, I have the text to get you to.
It doesn't say under the name, I don't see any reference to Complete Streets, oh, oh, yeah, it is there, but it's up to the commission to decide what you want to do. The second change is Section Two, it says under the supervision of planning and zoning administrators. I would keep it more general and say under the supervision of designated town staff, because sometimes some projects may be initiated by economic development and not planning and zoning.
But those are included later.
Yeah, but I think for the project phases, I would just keep it under the supervision of town staff, it could be the mayor or anybody. The other thing is, planning board should be reworded as planning commission, and everywhere throughout the document, Section Two under composition, you said, it says planning board here, but it's a planning commission.
Yeah, wherever it says planning board, you're right about that.
And Section Two under composition, it says the committee will reflect diversity in districts. What districts are you referring to? Are you referring zoning districts, or election districts, or planning districts?
I'm, that's a political statement. I'm talking about our ten, ten districts that we.
Political districts, okay. Section Three under terms, you have a typo there, it says new members at July twenty, two thousand and eleven, will begin new terms, it should say two thousand and twenty-one.
Where does it say that? Oh, oh, yes, okay, sorry.
And. Article Four, Section Two, on page two, you said chair and co-chair shall serve a minimum of two-year terms. So you said each term is four years in your first page, but in this, you're saying chair and co-chair are serving two-year terms. Did you mean two terms?
Two four-year terms.
Two four-year terms, okay. And that's all I have, I mean, minor changes.
That's all I have.
Clean up.
Yes, Tom. We changed that, I think, I, I, I had typed that change in earlier. Where is that? Let me make sure that I. Article Four, Section Two.
It should.
It should, I did not, I missed that, sorry.
Vice chair.
That should say vice, I changed it, I thought I got every, all of them.
Question?
Thank you, Tom, yes, sir.
Article Four, Section Two.
Article Four, Section Two, yes.
A minimum of two four-year terms? Maximum, it should be, right?
A maximum. I think we already changed that, but. But Section Two, Article Four? Article Four, Section Two.
So my.
Oh, sorry, okay. Of two four-year terms.
And. Should serve a maximum of two four-year terms.
A maximum of two four-year terms.
And one last thing, I mean, that's, the Greenway Committee Chair appoints both standing and ad hoc committees.
Where, where are you?
Last but one, on the second page, Section Three Committees under Article Five. I would always encourage a committee to function as a group than giving more authority to one person.
That's okay, the Greenway Committee appoints both standing.
Or assigns is a better word.
That's okay, what I didn't want was, I didn't want to take that back to planning.
Okay.
Because then, when we have George's pals who are willing to come in and work with us on some kind of architectural review.
Okay.
I don't want us to not be able to get them on that as quickly as possible. Am I correct in that?
Okay, the only reason I said to keep the title as Housatonic Greenway and Complete Streets Committee is because until now, we have been dealing with DOT staff, as these are two separate projects. So for them, if we are going to offer any letters of support or anything, moving forward, having this as one group's, you know, letter of support would eliminate any confusion in their heads as to what project they're referring to.
I think we need to educate them, because when I looked up our Greenway, I looked it up regionally and also in the state, and all Greenways in Connecticut, especially along the shore, are being named for their adjacent rivers. Like, you have, what, what is the river in Bridge, in Bridgeport? That, it's named after that, the, the river in New Haven, it's named after that. So they're trying to stick with the fact that we'll do the same. When you look at what, what Regional Council, Regional MetroCog is doing, they too are doing that. They got a big grant to rename all of the Greenway that goes to Bridgeport to reflect their local river.
The Greenway that you're referring to in New Haven, they have the East Coast Greenway proposed link.
It runs on top of.
And it's, Greenways are mostly along large expanses of, you know, public land where you have access to public amenities, but the Complete Streets are called Complete Streets because you're shifting the mode of transportation from an automobile-oriented roadway network to accommodating several uses on the roadway. So they're a little different, and that's why they have a different term, Complete Streets and Greenway.
I think it's semantics.
Okay, well, it's up to you, I just brought, I'd like the town staff to advise.
When I'm gone, I suggest, if anybody wants to change it, you may, but as long as I'm here, I would love to stick with this, yes.
Debbie, can you use your microphone, so people can hear you?
There I am, I'm sorry. Okay, it's just a renaming, it can be the Housatonic Greenway Committee and the Complete Streets Committee, it's like it's, or, you know, Housatonic Greenway and Complete Streets Committee, because the committee serves two purposes, and it should be in the title.
It represents both of those committees, if you read further in the name and.
But it's not the title.
The title is what is being used by regional planners when they look at Stratford. Eventually, we're gonna end up with a little sign that says Stratford SHG, just like Bridgeport is gonna have their own little sign. So that is how they're gonna identify, especially as we start connecting up with other towns. So this might not seem important now, but it will two or three years down the line.
So I'm confused, what is it named now, and what are we suggesting, Sismithe and?
Currently, we just have two committees, the Greenway and the other committee is Complete Streets.
Okay, and you were saying we need to educate the DOT going forward, that they need to deal with them differently than they have been in the past?
Well, that they need to look at it holistically. A Complete Street and a Greenway is a network, so we need them to look at both of them. You guys, I'm, I'm very aware of this, I know, because the Elm Street Greenway that we had been working on under the Greenway Committee got, got mixed into the Complete Streets project, and now we've lost all of our local control over the Elm Street Greenway project, and a project that was relatively small, that only included really a new sidewalk and some drainage issues, and also some striping and one intersection. And we, at the time, we had the money to pay for that, but now it's gotten lost in the Complete Streets project. So instead of capturing another half a mile of Greenway for us to use, it's gotten lost in this whole project. The state project of the new exchanges, I argued with four years ago, that the area